Call the meeting to order.
I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How high up do you?
If we could have Gordon go now.
Do you want to do Gordon right now?
He has something he needs to go to.
Yeah. Yeah, if we want to, if the board's okay, I'm going to move Gordon's presentation up because he needs to get to his daughter. All right. Okay.
Oh.
Okay.
Want to do the minutes?
Yeah, we'll do the minutes real quick. All right, do I have a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Great, I will start signing NFS documents so we can get those sent around. Do you have any nominations?
Don't believe so, no nomination strike, just one resignation.
Okay.
With regrets, except the resignation of Jill Lizier, Assistant Principal at the Memorial School, but also with sincere happiness for Jill, she took a principalship. So we're very, very happy for her. And that's well deserved.
Move to approve with regret?
Second.
All in favor? Wait to do the superintendent's report because it's probably going to be long.
It is not actually going to be long. So I will just quickly give an update. I did want to thank everyone who filled out the survey for grading. We just had a very, very spirited and healthy debate in the ISA committee about the grading. And the survey results, the pie charts will be posted sometime in the next couple of days. And that will be a topic on an upcoming school board agenda in the May 18th meeting. Also wanted to mention that we had a really good tour of the Seacoast Learning Collaborative Building today with the Facilities Committee, which is our former middle school. And our Facilities Committee will report out on that topic whenever they do their report out at the next meeting. Other than that, April break is a week away. And I hope everyone has fun and gets outside and has a great April break. I do know that when we come back to school from April break, the kids kind of turn into excited mode because it's nice out and they want to go outside and play, particularly our K5 or K4 students have a lot more excitement and energy when they come into the building during the day. So we'll look forward to seeing them when they come back from break and all the other students as well. And that concludes my report for today. I have the student council report as well, if you'd like me to read it.
Yeah.
Is that okay? While we're waiting for Gordon? All right, I definitely don't sound like Jocelyn, but I'll try. Jocelyn didn't give us much today. She said, there's a lot of fun and exciting events happening at our school right now. Sports are in full swing. Our middle school drama program put on Mrs. Candlewick's magical wax museum. And next week is spring carnival and the student council is doing the penny wars and raising money for Ukraine. The penny wars are a blast. Mr. Angel, don't let me forget, we got to go over there and bring some quarters and
Yes.
and maybe try to sway the jars toward the direction of the seniors. So anyway, that's Jocelyn's report and there is Gordon.
Perfect. You're on. Yep. Yes. Get him where he needs to be.
He can tease him too. We can tease him.
He's dancing.
I know, but it's, daddies do that for their daughters though.
Yeah, but he's not dancing with his daughter, he's dancing with the other dads.
I am.
You do it for your kids though.
So I have for the next two months, every Wednesday, dance practice.
Sorry.
It's Batman themed and I'm Commissioner Gordon.
Oh, nice. Didn't get the Joker, but you got Commissioner Gordon. That's pretty cool.
I did, so now Dan Doyle is going to let me borrow a police vest. So I'll be good there.
Nice.
So Gordon, for letting you jump ahead on the agenda, we're going to need video.
I'm not going to practice tonight. Well, where should we start? I have four things for you guys.
We start with the staff laptops.
Staff laptops. Okay. So I'm looking to purchase 50 new laptops. We still have probably about 120, 530 older laptops that are seven years old. They're basically the laptops we weren't able to replace with the large quantity we bought in the summer of 2020. And what I'm looking to do with these 50 new laptops, I'm basically looking to try and do this on a yearly basis, get back to the quality machine that we had prior to that mass purchase. We kind of went a little cheaper to get the quantity because of the remote instruction and webcams and, you know, the agent equipment. So basically I'm looking to get 50 now to start replacing the ones that we haven't yet, which will give us, you know, the best of those machines back available for surplus loaners for staff that, you know, their laptops break, waiting for it to get fixed, which we literally have nothing right now. You know, we get a new hire and we're searching for something to give to the new hire. So we're in desperate need of these 50 laptops. The cost was $50,666.50 and we'd like to use the facilities use revolving fund. And basically, like I said, I'd like to kind of get this in like a six-year rotation. So every year, 50 laptops, it'll cover, you know, basically a new laptop every six years for, you know, a staff member. Yes.
So you said in your letter that you're supporting over 100 devices?
Of the old devices.
Old devices?
Correct. So we purchased 150 new laptops in the summer of 2020 and we still have over 100 laptops that were, you know, six, seven years old, you know, at that time. So they're probably, they're probably close to eight years old.
How many do you need in total?
In total, probably, I mean, a one-to-one type thing, you know, probably like 260 or so. But then we have, you know, little oddballs, you know, like we get requests for, you know, the badge printers for a mobile laptop to go with that, you know, so we get a lot of stuff like that as well.
Here for six years?
Correct, so that'll get us about 300, which will also allow us to replace loner devices and any oddball laptops that are out there.
I looked up this laptop on the Dell website and on there, it's about $1,300.
Yep.
So this is a reduced rate for schools, is that?
Correct, reduced rate and typically quantity. You know, if I asked for five, it might have been 1,250 or something, but getting 50, they cut you a better break. Plus we do quite a bit of business with them, you know, every year with Chromebooks and whatnot as well, so they treat us well.
And then what comes with the laptop?
Just laptop and, you know, the Windows software licensing, which, you know, we get anyways through, you know, our yearly Microsoft renewals. So it's pretty much, you know, the hardware.
And what kind of warranty?
Um, good question. I think it's three-year? It's at least one year? Three years. Yep, three years.
Thank you.
Including accidental damage, which is nice.
Thank you.
And, you know, one other thing I just want to mention too, you know, it was nice getting, you know, that large quantity of laptops, but we, you know, scaled down the quality of them to get more. And, you know, we're struggling with them through, you know, almost two years now with devices just full-blown dying and breaking and, you know, where the bigger laptops, you know, like the one we've got sitting right there, that's eight years old, could be dropped and, you know, doesn't even chip.
Or break your foot.
It might break your foot. But. Yeah.
So a couple of questions, Gordon. So you mentioned that there's some that are six or seven years old. What is your target rotation? Do you have a plan of your target rotation?
So right now, the first two years would be replacing the devices that didn't get one of the newer ones. And then what I'd like to do is eventually, you know, work school by school, but it'll probably be, you know, based off of either, you know, you try and do, you know, teachers at this, you know, two different schools, try and get them, you know, situated. I don't, I don't know exactly how we're going to determine it because once we get through two years, now all the staff have, you know, well, at that point it'd be four-year-old from the larger purchase, but having really figured out how I want to, you know, pass out those 50 laptops every year, I just figure, you know, 50 a year for six years will allow us to replace them all.
So at least from my perspective, what I'd like to see is a plan that says, here's the laptops that we have. Our targeted age for retirement is, pick a number, six years. And this is what we're going to do each year to be able to make sure that each year, the six-year stuff falls off and I'm always within that cycle and that rotation.
Right.
And then you end up in a constant replacements plan and we know what are the, what is the end year age of the PCs? The other question I have is Mr. Baker mentioned that these are discounted. But I bought numerous laptops for our organization and $1,000 a laptop for both qualities is not cheap. I mean, I can go on Best Buy and get a very good laptop for 500, 600 bucks.
I mean, we're seeing it firsthand with the cheaper laptops we purchased two years ago. We've got seven, eight-year-old laptops out there that are in, you know, better condition. You know, if I had two in front of me right now, one from two years ago and an eight-year-old, I would give you the eight-year-old laptop. So the quality of these laptops are back to that standard where they're just, they're built better. They last, where right now, I mean, where USB ports failing, headphone jacks failing, HDMI failing. It's just nonstop with these things. You know, so to me, the quality is worth the investment over purchasing cheap laptops, you know, in a high quantity, you know, every two, three years.
Yeah, I just want to jump in just to continue with that answer. He's spending a considerable amount of effort with his staff maintaining those newer cheaper laptops than he is with the older, more expensive laptops.
But my only point is the cheaper laptops that I see on the market and the people who used to try to sell us were $300 laptops. The $600 laptops were not the cheap laptops. Those were, those are regularly eight, $900 laptops that you're getting for 600 bucks because you're buying quantities. And the $1,300 laptops, I mean, you're getting close to the price of a Mac for those.
No, that's not what they're, it's a $10,000 or $1,000.
Correct, he said discounted from the original price of 1,300. That's just extremely high laptop cost.
Yeah. So I just offer, whether you have cost in maintaining junk or cost in getting quality stuff, you're going to have costs.
Oh, I agree.
I will say that, you know, I don't know how recently you've bought computers, you know, for your company, but I'm involved with that and I can tell you that they are extremely high because of the shortage. And I purchased $500 laptops, I just did before Christmas, and over time, those $500 laptops get slower and slower and slower. And then you have to replace them before the warranty even works out. So it's just something to think about. But I do agree, there should be a plan.
Right, and with that plan, the problem right now is there was no plan. And so we replaced 150 laptops, we have, you know, a little over 100 left to replace. And then, you know, in a couple of years or, you know, after the, you know, the second year of replacing the older, well, now we've got 50 new laptops and we got to figure out which of the 150 we want to replace. So it's not going to be until we hit six years before we have a regular rotation. Because if we buying quantity, then at some point, we're going to be replacing one sooner than, you know, the others.
Do they have the laptops in stock? Because as Rick said, we've been, we're trying to get laptops for work and the price is similar to what we're paying and we're waiting months for laptops.
Yeah, so this particular model, I believe somewhere on the quote showed like, you know, if I purchased then, yeah, right here, estimated delivery of purchase today, April 13th. So this quote was pulled about a week and a half ago, two weeks, March 29th. So about a two-week wait.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah. So that was the other thing right now too, is, you know, that allows us to get these out and in place before summer, which allows us to then figure out what we got back, what's worth holding on to for loners or for any other projects, you know, during the summer.
I just want to point out to the board, in case you didn't read this, that this quote expires on April 15th. So if we're going to be able to stick with this number, we have to move on it if we're ready to move on it. Because nothing's getting cheaper.
Gordon, why did you happen to go with this particular laptop instead of like an Inspiron or something like?
It's, it's the same model as these older seven, eight-year-old laptops that, you know, we still have out there. So it's the same, you know, model line, just obviously newer components and whatnot.
Go ahead with Jamie, I'll go next. Did you raise your hand, Jamie? Or you can go first.
So just to Mr. Albert's point, my experience was prior to the increases that have been occurring in those $600 laptops were not cheap ones, they were, they were good, solid and robust laptops. So I don't mind supporting this, you've got seven-year-old laptops, they're going to die. I mean, they're not going to last you, but I really would like to see an aged inventory that turns into a, here's the, here's the rotation of what we're going to do that. And if six years is the year, you're talking about 300 and get rid of six years. And it should say, what do we have that's six years old? And then we can see that and plan for that, go right into the capital improvement plan that says, we've got this many laptops that are becoming six years old next year, we need X number of dollars to cover that.
Right, and the problem with that right now is we either have two-year-old laptops or, you know, the seven, eight-year-old laptops, you know, it's one or the other. You know, when we, when we put out the new laptops two years ago, we replaced everything but one particular model. And we took that model and we upgraded, you know, added some memory to it. And that's what we've been handing out to anybody who didn't get one of the new ones from two years ago. So the next two years, the goal is, you know, replace 50 of those this year, replace 50 of those next year. And then we're going to have to figure out, you know, which 50 of the new models from 2020 are we going to replace? You know, and until we can get everything in a cycle of 50, you know, we're going to run into the same issue of purchasing 100 this year, and now you've got 100 to figure out how to replace in six years.
And that would be my point, if you have a cycle and after two years, the oldest one you have in the cycle is four years old and your cycle is six years old, then that becomes a warrant article to say, let's, let's put in this amount. We don't need to buy anything this year, but we want to put the money aside. Need to buy anything next year, we want to put the money aside. Now they're six years old and now you can start replacing them.
Right, and I guess my, my worry there though, doing that is, you know, now we're purchasing 150 new laptops, you know, in four years now. And then we're still not on some sort of yearly cycle to, you know, just kind of slowly cycle them out rather than doing a mass cycle out.
Take a look at how it plays out, but that way at least the funding is there for the, for the other years. So you have the funding to go in and get that number of them and you can just set it up as a cycle.
Right.
I think one way to look at it is you're getting a three-year warranty on these, right?
Right.
In three years, if, you know, they're out of warranty and something breaks, nine times out of 10, it's cheaper to buy a new one than pay to get it replaced unless you have the parts to do it yourself.
Right.
So if you look at a three-year cycle as like just to Jamie's point, as your plan, you know, if something's, you know, the warranty's running out in three years, you could get four or five years out of a laptop.
Right.
Sort of set your cycle up that way maybe.
Right. Yeah, and right now, you know, we, that's what we do, we, we take laptops that, you know, maybe a broken screen on it and we scrap it for parts for, you know, the next one that breaks that we can use something off of it.
I just wanted to speak to the quality on behalf of our teachers. Teachers have to have, there are three things that teachers have to have to teach in the modern era. They have to have a photocopier that works. They have to have internet that's accessible and they have to have a computer that works. And if it's a couple hundred dollars or $300 to make sure that the device is going to be of a higher quality, I directed Gordon to get the teachers what will work. And that's, I need you to know that Gordon is really good at getting low pricing, he works really, really hard. He has saved us thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in technology since he has become the director. So I, he has won my trust when he says that this is the right item to purchase. But I don't think that we should purchase computers because they're congruent with what we had before. I want Gordon to buy the ones that the teachers need to be able to teach. The teachers have enough frustration, they don't need the frustration of the computer not working.
I support replacing laptops for the teachers. My question is regarding the source of the funds. This proposal is to use the funds from the facilities use revolving fund. So I'm wondering
Is that not the right one, Matt?
Why we would want to do that, how much money's in there right now? There's other, there are other items on the agenda that also say that they want to draw down from that fund, so.
So let me, let me kind of go back in time. So a couple of years ago, when the budget was built, we made a conscious decision to remove the technology purchases out of the operating budget and shift that burden to the facility use revolving fund. The facility use revolving fund was established back in 2007 for the rental of any, any revenue specific to facility rental is segregated in this fund and it can be used for maintenance and repair of the buildings and also technology costs. The current balance in that, or as of February 28th, is $224,666. All right, the amount of money that gets added to this fund each month is $11,667, which is the rental of the old middle school. And so right now, the balance should be up over $240,000.
Can you repeat that balance please?
At the end of February, it was $224,667.
Thank you.
And for those of you, by the way, thank you to all the parents and folks that are here. This is where renting the middle school can help us fund things like technology. Right, so we need these computers and the rent from the middle school will pay for that technology. So I just thought I'd point that out, that the $220,000 or $240,000 that are in, that's in that account, a large portion of that money has come from the rent that we've accrued from the rental of the old middle school. So we need a motion.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Gordon, you had two more items, right?
It's three.
Three more.
Okay. Oh, it's okay, we just want to get you dancing.
I Well, hopefully, hopefully the next two will be pretty quick. So I've got, looking to purchase 20 additional iPads for Bakey. Total cost is $6,230. This includes hardware and the one-time cost for the licensing that we use to manage the iPads. We still have about 100 older model iPads. We've purchased quite a few through grants and whatnot through COVID. But we still have about 100 older models out there and some of them are getting close to end of life. And talking with Dr. Kennett, he believes that he's going to need about 20 additional iPads for next school year, especially if the kindergarten enrollment gets up towards 100 students. And this will also allow us to be able to provide additional loners for any broken devices.
I have a question, but it's for
Sure.
How much time are we parking these little kids in front of iPads during the day?
I can't give you a quantitative numeric exact amount. I'd have to ask Dr. Kennett for it to do a study.
Yeah, because my concern is giving every, give all these little kids iPads and if they're spending most of their day on iPads, that's not the right way to go for education. So I don't know how much time is being spent, so if it's, you know, a set amount of time every day of a half an hour to the course of their day, that's one thing, if it's two hours to the course of the day, then I get very concerned about what we're doing with technology.
I can certainly share as a former K2 principal, that there are letter, letter apps that help kids learn letters. There are basic math apps that help kids learn math. But I can't, I can't tell you that I've done this, I just don't want, I want to answer the question very, very clearly that I don't feel comfortable giving you, I know what I'm comfortable with and what the expectation would normally be, but I can't give you a data set that would tell you the number, I haven't surveyed the staff at Bakey. Right, but the reality is, is what Gordon is saying is that the Bakey school has one iPad for students and he needs 20 to continue to support the program. If you'd like to discuss the use of technology at K2, we could place that on an ISA committee agenda or school board agenda and invite Troy here to talk about those practices.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them. I want to make sure that their entire educational experience at K through two isn't looking at a screen.
I can assure you it's not everything because we just bought a lot of books and they're reading them a lot.
I'm a kid, I have a kindergartner and I can tell you, they're not on the iPads a lot. They're doing Storytime, Circle Time, Centers.
Yeah.
I mean, I just had parent-teacher conference last week with my kindergarten teacher and it's a lot of hands-on productive play and learning. I think the iPads are really more for maybe some small group work, doing some of the apps on letters, but a lot of it is taught, you know, in traditional means of education. It's in my daughter's classroom.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. So my next one is yearly Chromebook purchase. And the majority of this is part of what Matt's mentioned about, you know, pulling money from, you know, the technology budget and purchasing things through the facilities use fund. So every year, we purchase Chromebooks for upcoming freshmen, typically anywhere, you know, from 180 to 200, which allows a surplus for any new students enrolled throughout the year as well. So the majority of this is for that purpose on top of all of the loner devices that all the libraries have available to give students that have forgotten their Chromebook, broken a Chromebook, they're all end of life as of this June. So a good portion of what's left over from the freshman handout will be going to libraries to replace their loner equipment. And then Memorial needs an additional 20 for one of their classrooms. And so the total cost is $54,518.20.
So between this and the staff laptops, how much were budgeted this year to buy Chromebooks and laptops? Because we're taking this out of the same fund that Ms. Mahoney just mentioned, how much is budgeted for this?
There's nothing in the operating budget for it because the intent is, is to fund these annual purchases out of this fund, out of the facility use revolving fund.
So when the budgets were built, there was no laptops or Chromebooks in that budget?
For the last couple of years. And we've been able to buy a lot of equipment, you know, the last two years due to COVID grants and, and other means. So we haven't really had to pull any money out of the revolving fund for this, but now, you know, we need to.
Remind me, how long is the lease?
How long is what?
How long is the lease for this, Elsie? It's, the lease is 10 years. Thanks.
Same warranty question as before?
I believe Chromebooks only have a one-year warranty. I believe Chromebooks only have a one-year warranty. Yeah, one-year warranty.
And a question for Mr. Angel. This would be subject to the new insurance plan, for lack of a better word, that would.
Yes. Yes.
Correct, including existing.
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody was a calculator. What's the cost per Chromebook?
Two hundred and twenty one dollars.
Two twenty one?
Yeah, there's a.
The Google fee.
Correct.
Two fifteen seventy-four plus thirty-two oh seven.
Yep. I see the cover letter. I don't see that.
There's a link.
In the, in the report.
I did something.
Like last week's debacle.
We just wanted to see you dance here first, Gordon.
Well, they, they give us beer before we start. So unless you got, got a beer.
I'll die a Coke, sorry.
I make a motion to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
We just one more.
All right. So now we're jumping to old business, the wireless. I don't know how much you guys really want me to explain because we've, you know, had these conversations for a couple of months now. Tom's been, you know, explaining what, what's been going on and the need for it. But I, I put out for, for quotes. One was our existing vendor. And another was our vendor that we use for our firewalls and all our security products on our laptops. And, uh, they were kind enough to send me one of the devices so that I could test and play with it. And, uh, it's, it's nice, um, very easy to set up. And, and monitor what's going on, which is good. So essentially the, the goal here is to replace a hundred and fifty access points, which are, um, mainly classrooms or small office areas. Um, I've added twelve bigger access points to be put in libraries, small gyms, baking memorial. You know, main offices, the SAU office. And then, uh, the biggest thing is the, the six for the auditorium and the large gymnasium. So currently we have, I believe, two access points in the auditorium and one in the gymnasium. And they're just, they're not designed to handle, you know, more than twenty connections. So with these bigger devices and having three in each area, you know, we should be able to fill the auditorium and everybody be able to get on wifi if needed. And those will be the, the two areas that have the, the bigger devices. So with the, the vendor that I would like to go with, they were about forty-two thousand dollars cheaper than our current vendor. At fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And then in there is a link to the quote.
Gordon, can you please talk about the additional annual cost? That's really important for the.
Yes. So with, with Sofos, the, the, uh, the vendor I'd like to go with, we, we have firewall, uh, devices through them. We have our antivirus encryption. We have, uh, phishing test software. So we have a, a bunch of different products through them. And, uh, basically with all that, you know, includes our support. So we don't have an annual support cost added with this where with the other vendors is a yearly support cost to just call them and say, hey, what's going on? How do I do this? Or just to get updates for the, the hardware? So all of that is included with this as well.
What would an annual support cost for something like that typically be?
I don't know if they had that in the actual. I don't think they did in the actual quote, but I, I want to say that we might be paying currently somewhere around five, four or five grand a year for the support now.
And did you ask, um, consolidated, you just signed a, an agreement with them for internet, right?
Yes.
Did you ask them for pricing equipment?
I did not. No, I went with two quotes for, uh, the Sofos and one for our existing vendor.
Is there any urgent deadline on this?
I think the pricing that was given to me expires at the end of April. And then, you know, just like anything else, there's, uh, you know, if I, if I purchase this in May, I don't know when I'm going to get it. You know, they, they said by May, you know, hopefully early August. You know, and the, and the nice thing with, you know, this project is we have the wiring infrastructure already in place. So we pretty much, you know, I think there's one somewhere. But we basically just have to pull it off the wall, unplug a cable, throw the new one up and it's done.
I'd be curious what consolidated would offer. And even if you didn't go with them, maybe it would be a negotiating point if it's less money.
I don't know if they offer any type of solution. I'm sorry?
They offer this type, type of.
Yeah. I mean, they, they, you know, like, like Comcast offer, you know, little home pods that you can put in, but to this scale, I, I don't believe that they do. I might be wrong, but I don't, I don't believe they do. Like they would typically become the reseller at that point and they would reach out to manufacturers that they work with to offer solutions.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I just, uh, Gordon, I, I just wanted to answer Jim's direct question. Yes. Because he asked to order the equipment, get it all in, inventory it, get ready. And then the minute school ends, he starts putting systems in. And he has to do that in a, in a, um, a carefully planned manner because there are a number of summer programs that go on in the district. And those cannot be disrupted combined with the, the, we're working almost until the end of June. So he has a tight window. He needs the, the hardware in the district and ready to go when school ends.
Yeah. And May fourth is what this pricing is good for.
So if you gave him the order tomorrow, when would they deliver the product?
Hopefully beginning of July.
That's the point. If we delay it, he, he, we won't have it till the beginning of August. He can't do that.
So, um, just a couple of questions. As I'm reading this, this is, um, material only. You're going to do the install yourself?
Correct. It's fairly simple. You know, we got to unbox everything, provision them originally. And then we just, you know, pop a bracket up, change out the bracket and.
Warranty on these also?
Um, I believe. I don't see anything on here, but I believe with the, all of our other Sofos equipment, it's three years. So I would imagine it would be the same, but I can definitely check.
Let me ask another question while you're, while you're checking. Yeah. If I'm understanding you correctly, we're currently spending roughly a hundred thousand dollars plus five or six thousand dollars for, uh, support. We're replacing that with an upgraded system that's going to allow us much better access for wireless throughout the district. And we're doing that at a cost that's much better, forty, forty-seven thousand dollars cheaper than what we're doing today.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm all in.
I knew you would be. Now, I mean.
You should have started with this one.
Part of it is, you know, when, when I first got here and, and learned that we were using Sofos products, I knew of them. They weren't really my cup of tea, but now that I've been using them, you know, especially their firewalls, you know, I'm in there all the time. You know, messing around, trying to figure out why things aren't working, why things are getting blocked. You know, I've, I've kind of learned to grow. I've, I've, I've learned to, to like them. And then they put out a new portal that allows me to manage everything from one single portal. And now I love them. So getting the access point, um, that they sent me to be able to test out and, and, and configure, I've had it on my desk. I've been connected to it on my phone and my laptop and just, it's just, you know, walking across the room, I'm getting better signal than being right under one of the access points that's installed in the SAU office. Speed's much faster. I can see everything that's going on with it because it integrates with our firewall and other products. And it's just, it's just making life, you know, will, will make life a lot easier. Being able to track down issues and, and figure out what's going on, figure out if there's devices on the network that shouldn't be. So it was a, it was kind of a, a no-brainer for me at least.
Mara, did you have a question?
Um, just to want to clarify for myself, this is the wireless we're talking about. This is the wireless that was part of affectionately called Tom's big three, right?
Correct. Yes, correct.
I didn't know if there was, just wanted to clarify that there wasn't two different ones. Okay.
I specifically asked them not to name it that on the. Thank you for.
Well, that would have saved the question.
Yes, I'm sorry. All right. Well. Yes, this clicks one of the big three off.
Okay.
Yes. And remember, teachers need good devices and they need access to the internet. So this is the second step of three. Gordon got the internet speed up. He's purchasing the devices. This is the last piece of that process to, to help with that.
Okay.
Well, almost. I got one more thing, but it can wait. Not a huge need, but eventually the network switching.
All the switches, yeah, those are always a problem.
And move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Jim.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks for all the hard work. Thanks for all the hard work, Gordon. Now go dance.
Now he's going to be.
Go dance it out.
That's right. Yeah.
All right. Now we can switch back to. Committee reports. So I guess just, does anyone have a committee report? Cause.
As of right now.
Tom gave mine already.
I just gave a little update. Sorry.
Because so far excellence in student achievement and facilities are the only two that have met and they both met today right before this. So I don't really know if anybody's prepared to share anything. Okay. All right. We will, um, did you have anything for SST or?
Nope.
Okay.
They have a new principal. Other than that, nothing else to report right now.
All right.
We do need a board member for SST eventually, but it doesn't need to be done tonight. We can do it at the next meeting.
Okay, fine. Alrighty. Um, so first public comment. And I'll just remind everybody that you have three minutes. I have my handy dandy little timer here. Just state your first name, last name and the town you are from.
Elizabeth Lanville, Kingston, New Hampshire. Thinking back to last week's school board meeting, these are the concerns that I have. Baki School had conferences last Wednesday. How are working families who wanted to attend both if they go to work, have to go to conferences and wanted to come to the, to the board meeting? Was this an oversight? Tonight Memorial has conferences. So again, is that another oversight and who's looking at the calendar? Why weren't conferences, um, expected to change because there was a school board meeting tonight? Um, a little bit of more information, I was looking, um, on the SAU seventeen website where I am going to quote exactly what it says. Where else in the area is competency-based instruction and grading being implemented? Competency-based instruction is a New Hampshire law, RSA one ninety-three C three, as well as Department of Ed Policy three oh six, two sixty-one. It is also already implemented in a number of school districts in the area, including Epping, Oyster River and SAU sixteen, which includes Exeter, Stratum and Brentwood. We have heard at the meeting before last that Mr. Ambrose doesn't care about what other districts do. Do you still feel that way about the grading topic? Are teachers comfortable?
Can I ask you a quick question? Yep. Um, I just wanted to know which agenda item you were speaking to because you have to speak about something on the agenda.
Yes, I have, um, today's agenda.
Which item?
Or what? I don't know.
I just wanted to clarify. Cause I don't, I'm not sure what. It's not on any of you.
Approval of the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Are teachers comfortable with the shift to letter grading? Sanborn has always been known as a progressive district with competency-based grading. How are teachers feeling about taking tremendous steps backwards? If we want to retain veteran teachers, we should stop telling them how to grade their students. This is, is this what our teachers want or is it another admin push?
So Elizabeth, I'm going to pause you again. I don't necessarily think that grading specific to the strategic plan. Is it?
It is.
I'm gonna have to say it is.
All right. It's part of objective. We haven't had a, yeah, because we haven't had a.
It's, it's.
We're not decide, we haven't decided which way we're going yet. So I don't know that. I just want to clarify that we're.
I was gonna say we sent out a survey?
Yeah, we did send out a survey. Okay, fine. I just want to make sure we're staying on track and we're not open. Thank you.
Am I allowed to thank any teachers or because that's not on the agenda, I can't?
I'm just trying to make sure that we're.
Okay. So, um, I just want to take a moment and thank a few teachers my children have had, Miss Welvers kindergarten, Fennenberg, no longer in the district, district, first grade, Sota, second grade, Miss Dusset, third grade. Also, all of the preschools, uh, preschool teachers, Miss Khalil and Mr. Conda, plus all the support staff in preschool, OT, PT and speech.
I, I, I need to respond to one thing. I'm not letting it go.
That's your choice.
I am not comfortable with people taking my comments out of context. I said that I don't care what other districts do for early release days. I did not say that I don't care what other districts do about other things. Just want to be fair. And I did say that I don't care what other districts do with regard to early release days. But I did not say that about other educational initiatives. We frequently talk to other districts about what they're doing and we collaborate regularly with area school districts. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Fina from Newton, just finishing up from last week. I just want to say to the board and administration, you know, we hear rumors of cuts and replacing teachers and librarians with paraprofessionals. There's always some level of truth in stories. What is the saying? I don't think we have complete transparency. Don't get me wrong. Our paras are amazing and underappreciated. We have been told intervention hasn't happened because we can't get people to accept the positions. We can't retain employees. So why are we not renewing contracts? These teachers do so much more than teach our children. They are our children's backbone, lifeline and support. Their school is their second home to them. When staff changes are made, it directly impacts them. I took it upon myself to get a glimpse of what happens behind closed doors. My volunteer tier, my volunteer at the, volunteer time at the school has been eye-opening with a lot of good happenings in areas of opportunity. The lack of amenities and support for the middle school staff is disheartening. Yes, there is shared space in the high school wing, but it isn't really practical for them to use. I personally had been on the committee about merging the high school and middle school campuses. It was brought up about the lack of space for teachers in meeting rooms. We already have spatial issues. Now there's going to be three grades to utilize the space. I was a bit outraged and I seeked out some of the teachers. I found them eating and having a meeting in their classroom. Some of the most amazing teachers I could, could see, I had my knickers in a bunch. They agreed more space is desirable, but they politely corrected me and explained to me how it's more important for the kids to have the space they need than they can make do without complaints, might I add? Thank you to the eighth grade team for being amazing and showing me the positives. Can you imagine if your employer didn't provide a break room or maybe a small fridge because it used a lot of electricity? Sounds like a great place to work. Thankfully it is a great place to work because of our hardworking staff and dedicated teachers that do their job. We're fortunate to have Principal Malilla who's doing a fabulous job. I'm glad he's going to be getting a vice principal for support. It's desperately needed for the middle school.
Sorry, which, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what everybody's trying to like, what we're agenda item we're talking about.
Mine was more about the five-year plan and what we're adopting. We haven't fulfilled all the other ones. And before we go making more changes and plans, we really should make sure that things are working. So I'm almost done. Um, and so my point on that is just make sure we're using our resources wisely. You know, we talk about how we're getting the rent from the middle school, but we also paid rent when we had a space. Is that a good choice? It very well may be, but these are just things that jump out to me. Again, we want to make sure we're using our, making our choices and using our resources wisely. We collaborate and work together. The entire community will benefit. And then you did send out something about the grading. My question is, can you just stick with something? I, I don't care. I like the A, B, C, D because I'm old school, but I'm old. And then Alma, can you add, what I'd like to say about Alma is, can you, how do you add two fours to a three point six eight on products and the grade go down? And all you hear as well, it's Alma.
It's called decaying average and nobody likes it.
Everyone says, I don't know, it's Alma, but you get two fours and your grade goes down. I don't know. I count one, two, three, four.
Kristen Sturgeon from Kingston. Basically going to the strategic plan.
Kristen Sturgeon from Kingston, um, basically going to the strategic plan and the five year plan.
Thank you.
Mostly regarding the survey that was sent out and the grading system. I have seen a lot of feedback from parents and talked to other parents, the survey that was sent out, which I didn't, sorry, I can't read this, but I can't see you. Getting old. Um, anyway, I didn't realize because I use Google. So every time I get a survey and I fill it out, I don't have an issue. It wasn't until someone pointed out the other day that these surveys that are being sent out cannot be accessed if you don't have a Google account. You have to create one just to fill these out.
That is not true. We had a number of people that filled them out without them. There must have been, did you contact someone at the central office?
I didn't, but it was just somebody that, because I pointed out and said, make sure you fill out the surveys. Today is the last day. And someone commented and said, I don't have a Google account. It will not let me access it.
We had a lot of people fill it out. They did not have Google, so I don't know what happened for that individual person. But in the future, if they just call the central office, Phyllis would be happy to refer them to someone in tech to make sure that they can take the survey. I feel awful.
Okay.
If that person would like to contact me directly, we would be happy to give them an opportunity to share their perspective. We, we didn't, there, it definitely worked for people who didn't have a Google account.
Okay, well, that's good to know because I'm like, that's, you're not getting an accurate representation if a hundred percent of the people aren't able to, or at least a hundred percent of people who want to do.
Yep.
Anyway, and, um, and I, several people also mentioned that they didn't get the text alerts that were mentioned last week that were going to go out about the survey. I don't know if it's, but they've received others. Like I've received some closing, school closing ones and bus issue ones, but I didn't get anything about the survey. So I don't know if that's a glitch in the system as well, but might be something. As far as the grading system, I have, I brought two little papers here from my little second grader that I, he's brought home in the last week. He has one paper here. He has everything right on it and he got a P. He has one paper here where he got two things wrong and still has a P. The grading system is almost too subjective. And I feel like it doesn't give the kids, um, I have a neighbor that had said to me, my kid was told basically Ps are, the Es are unattainable for these kids. Even, um, again, he brought home another paper. He had everything on the paper correct. Got the bonus question wrong and got an IP. How does that happen? So, um, you know, for a second grader, it's disheartening to see, I mean, I would imagine even for a senior, it's disheartening to know that you did everything you're supposed to do and you still don't get the top grade. So I feel like maybe going back to the ABCD with the hundred percent, you only get sixty percent. You get a D or an F, whatever it is. It's a percentage. It's, numbers are finite. There's no subjectiveness to it. You either get it right or you get it wrong. It's not based on, you know, what the teacher feels like that day, if they think you put enough effort into it, it is what it is. So that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Two seconds.
Two seconds.
So I just wanted to make a comment because there was a couple of comments here. At the ISO meeting today, we did talk about the results of the survey. So I just wanted to share because the questions were about what are the teachers thinking, what do the parents think, et cetera. Eighty-seven percent of the parents that responded to the, um, survey, uh, preferred the zero to a hundred grading scale. And fifty-four and a half percent of the teachers that responded to the survey preferred the zero to a hundred grading scale. So there's questions that came up about that. That was just released today and discussed in ISAs, so I thought I would share that with the, uh, with the crowd.
Those pie charts will be on the website tomorrow. We just needed to have the ISO meeting so that they were shared with the committee before they were made public.
All right, so there's no one else. We will, uh, is Brian here?
Yes.
I can't see him.
Mr. Stock, are you here?
He hiding?
I am here.
Ah, there you are. All right, uh, SST, it looks like, uh, that's you, right?
I like that. I'm going to yield my.
Y'all know what SST is, right? That's a Seacoast School of Technology. We have about, oh, depending on the year, anywhere from sixty to a hundred kids who participate. They do some amazing programs over there, a lot of them earning industry credentials, college credits, lots of exciting opportunities. So tonight you're going to hear just a little snippet of some of the things that they do, so.
No, it's perfectly legal. Yeah, it's a public meeting.
Yep. Could you move over here to get my good side, please?
Hello, my name is Caitlin Cunningham and I'm a senior. I have here two binders that I handed, um, back to you, um, of photos of some of the many things I do in animal and plant science. Please feel free to look at them as I'm speaking. Each folder is different. I want to say thank you for having me here tonight to talk to you about the other half of my day at the Seacoast School of Technology. I came on the 10th grade sophomore tour and I knew right away that I wanted to do this. I was so excited to be there and couldn't wait to start my first year of animal and plant science the next year. What really caught my eye was that there was hands-on experience right off the bat, as well as the varieties of animals spanning from dogs, fair, birds, guinea pigs, rabbits, to fishes and tortoises. When you walk into our classroom, you are welcomed into a regular classroom. There's a lot, uh, there's a lot of learning that goes on here. We take notes for half the class, then we are off applying what we learn. Once you leave the classroom, we either, we either work in our vet tech station, the aquarium room, the greenhouse, our small animal room, huge shop and aquaculture area. My junior year was my first year of SST. And while everyone was in person, I was the only person in my whole class that was remote for most of the year. I had to learn everything through a screen and would you believe it, it was pretty difficult. We went over safety, animal behavior, dairy science, livestock, the National FFA, Harley Pro, business etiquette, floral design, business, aquariums and agriculture and vet tech. For my senior year, we are cover, we are covering greenhouse science, sustainable agriculture such as hydroponics, aquaponics, aeroponics, floral design, animal reproduction, nutrition, and my favorite equine science. In equine science, we studied the anatomy and physiology of horses. We have also got the amazing opportunity to visit horse farm in the equine science at UNH. Most importantly, we got to have hands-on experience, what it, hands-on and experience what it is like to take care of horses and how they function. It has really made me have a passion for this particular field so much that I am volunteering at a horse farm that rescues horses in Brentwood. So far, it is so awesome. The fact I get to apply all my skills that I learned from animal and plant science feels very rewarding. Now I want to break the myth that this class is just about petting cute animals and smelling the beautiful roses outside. This class is hard work that truly pays off. You earn college credit and you also are able to apply what you learn from the notes we take. You can even get an honors application like me. You need to have the passion and drive to do this, to go into the field, learn more about the field, or even just want to learn about the subject as a hobby. Any other way, you have to want to learn. I have grown so much just by being in this class, even though I haven't been fully in person until this year, still so much has happened. I have always wanted to do something with animals. These two years, although half remote, this class and the people in it have made me feel happier than I have ever been in a long time. This class makes me enjoy learning and want to keep doing more with this passion. I plan on going into the animal science program at UNH after high school. I want to try doing animal care or animal behavior. That is all, and I want to thank you so much for your time to talk to you about my program. I hope you have enjoyed the photos. I want to extend an invitation for you to come to my classroom, our program at any time. Be prepared for anything in my classroom. Anything can and does happen. Thank you. And are there any questions I can answer?
I, yes.
First of all, that was, that was great. Thank you for sharing. What grade you have to be in? Do you need to be a junior to go to SST or is there, is there certain grade you have to be in?
Well, at Sandborne, um, I'm pretty sure it's just junior and senior, but you go on tours your sophomore year to see if you want to go into it.
Okay.
So.
That was really great. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to mention that I love the presentation. Thank you so much. But I also wanted you to know that having toured the SST facility myself a couple of times, I certainly would encourage anyone on the board or in the public who would like a tour of the SST to go and see what an amazing facility it is. Their automotive program has a fully functioning, modern automotive bay. Their medical program has a fully functioning medical area where they actually practice what they learn. So the, the cool thing about the photos in the, in the books, which are fantastic, by the way, is that the, the students, what they, they learn at a very high rigorous level and then they apply that to real world situations. The early education program is fantastic. They have students. I, I, I think it's just so, so great that it's such an incredibly rich opportunity for our kids and it really doesn't always get the attention that it deserves. So I thank you for, for reaching out to me and to coming to the board meeting to present. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much for coming.
I'll just add just one more thing. We did a great job with that. You know, it's, it's great when we can have students kind of talk about their learning and share with you all, not just what they're learning, but why it's important to them. So thank you, thank you for allowing us to do that. We'll do that again next week and actually have a couple of students talking about their extended learning opportunities and what they're doing with that as well. Um, so Seacoast School of Technology students from Sandborne, you can start going in, and that's relatively new. Caitlin may not have, that's fine. It's okay. You're good. She may not have known that. And with COVID, it was a, it was a little bit trickier. It, it is certainly, it's a commitment for students, right? To be able to do that, it is a portion of their day. They, they go for the first year from about nine, not quite nine o'clock in the morning and they don't come back till almost 11:30. And when they go to the second year program, they're gone from about 12 o'clock to two o'clock. So it's about a third of their day that they're committing to doing that. And typically for students to be able to do that, they have to make choices. You can't do all the different kinds of courses and programs that you want to do. And we'll work with kids in any ways that we can to try to help them fit everything into their schedule, find other ways to do some of those alternative credits so that they can get as many of their priority ones into their day as possible. But I can tell you, there's never a time I go to SST and don't see students highly engaged and proud of some of the things that they're doing. So it's great that we could be a part of that program and going into next year, we're expecting some pretty high numbers from Sandborne kids that have applied and want to attend this year. So actually you and I may have to have a conversation about that. A little bit more than I would have expected, but we'll figure it out. Figure it out. Thanks, everybody.
I just want to add, you don't have to stay, but, um, I think SST is a, it's a great program. My son, when he was here, he didn't attend it, but he had several friends who did and I've spoken with, um, their parents, some of them. And you know, some of the friends that he's kept in touch with have, um, gotten good jobs. One of his friends did the web design program and got a job over at Southern New Hampshire University, working on web design there. But I will also say that their culinary school, um, puts out offers for like Thanksgiving. You can order stuff for Thanksgiving and they had a cookie walk, I think they've done that. Not as much during COVID, but pre-COVID. So, um, I would keep an eye out, um, for those announcements because I've, uh, I've participated in a couple of those and they're actually wonderful.
That's true. And in that same vein, if anyone's watching or sitting here and you have middle school age kids, there's opportunities to get your middle schoolers involved in some of the different after school and evening programs. Just to kind of check the place out and get really excited about what it looks like. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And kudos to everybody that does choose to go to SST because choosing hands-on is really cool. It's, it's a great way to learn. So I'm proud of all of them for making that choice.
All right, um, approval of program assurances, Dr. Haynes.
She was hiding too.
So it's that time of year again, when the New Hampshire Department of Education has rolled out the program assurances for all of the title funding that districts across the state receive. Districts receive Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV funding from the, uh, US government. And we have assurances that we are asked to sign and the signatures will be coming from the superintendent and the board chair that basically say that the money that we're given for, we receive Title I, Title II and Title 4A will be used for the purposes that we say we're going to use them for. And that those funds will be used to supplement and not supplant any of the regular district budget monies. So Title I is used for additional support for struggling students. Title II is used in part for professional development opportunities as well as, um, some student related items. And Title 4A is generally used for extending student learning. We have used Title IV in the past for some of the dual enrollment classes at the high school. So what I'm asking tonight is that the board accept the program assurances, um, basically agree to follow what the, what is written in them, knowing full well that we will be only using those funds for the purposes for which they're designated.
You need a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Decide anything?
I think I do. I think it's in here. All right, um, approval of strategic plan.
All right.
And Patty.
Well, Patty, I think Patty's good, but I'll speak and Patty wants to chime in. She's happy to, you know, I'm happy to have her. We have worked, we've received a lot of feedback. We basically did a, um, a miniature third or fourth or fifth or sixth revision of the strategic plan. And I think that we're ready to land this plane for now. But I want to be clear that it, it is a living document and it will need to be revised and maintained regularly as a part of our operations. So the strategic plan should be reviewed at the ISA subcommittee. It should be reviewed at finance. It should be reviewed at, at, uh, facilities. It should be reviewed at board meetings. It should be used in administrative team meetings when we're making decisions. It should be used during the budget process and revised accordingly. So it is a living document. I do think that, uh, Dr. Haynes worked super hard based on some feedback from some board members this week to actually get you the, uh, uh, an updated version for today. But I, I, my sense is that we might need another, to wait until the November, uh, the May eighth, sorry.
Not November.
May 18th school board meeting to, um, finally adopt it, just so that you have a chance to read the changes. And certainly I would look to you for guidance as to whether or not you need more time until May. I was impressed that Dr. Haynes turned it around in 24 hours. It was pretty, pretty good. Go ahead.
I'm trying to find the changes, but I feel like since it's all like.
In there.
Together. Is there anywhere that's like highlighted?
Jamie has a synopsis for you.
Yes, I'm going to talk in a minute and I will lay those out.
Yeah, Jamie will lay them out. He and I worked closely together. Jim came by and other people sent feedback. I certainly talked to Dawn. And, uh, Dr. Haynes, Mr. Osher and I met and discussed all the feedback. And I think, I think we're in a good spot, but I had asked Jamie if he could share some of the ideas. I just, he and I had kind of collaborated quite a bit over the last couple of days to get this into a space where we think everyone should feel pretty good about it. Oh, and Jim too. Jim, Jim collaborated too. Yeah, I don't want to. Go ahead, Jamie. I'm turning it over to you.
So as, as Tom said, my thanks to, um, to Dr. Haynes and to Mr. Osher, uh, for working through this. Uh, at the last meeting, I, I mentioned a number of concerns that I still had and a number of things that I thought would be improvements to it. I completely concur with the superintendent. This has to be a living document. This can't be a strategic plan that you finish it, you check a box, and you put it up on the shelf and nobody looks at it for two years. So some of the things that we wanted to make sure that we're in there is specific people assigned to objectives. Yes, they'll have to have support from other people, but somebody needs to own it so they can report on it and they can identify any barriers or problems that they're having. Um, a focus on outcomes and measures. What is it that we are measuring? What is going to be the outcome? Not just what we're going to work on, but what is the outcome that we're going to measure against to add those in? And then we, we got into some of the specifics, strategic target, target one, objective A grading. So there are discussions about the timelines. We had further discussions about that in ISA today. So if you wanted to look at that, you'd be able to see discussions going on in ISA today. But basically, uh, we had said before that we were going to revisit what those timelines are in November, what those targeted are. And we agreed that we would say that at a minimum, we're going to target to meet the New Hampshire averages from where we are today by the end of the plan. So through extrapolation, we would meet those averages and we would look at the timing and see what we couldn't do to tighten that up. So that was strategic objective A. Strategic, strategic target two, objective B was a curriculum. Again, we discussed timelines and tightening up the timelines. Um, there was a lot of feedback that I and others had about some of the links. There were new links. We hadn't seen those documents before. And so we added that the, the linked documents, we would, we would put into the plan that we would review those as part of the living plan. We would review both the graduation competencies and the performance indicators. We also agreed that we'd come up with a grade level overview. So you've heard the superintendent talk about at the end game, we want parents to be able to click on their grade or their course and know what it is that the child is studying and know that by periods, by, um, grading periods as to this is what we're covering in this point of time. This is what we're covering in this point of time. So you could literally say second grade, third marking period, what are we covering? And so that, that would be readily available to parents. A lot of the information in the graduation competency section and the performance indicators section are not what I would say layperson readable. Um, and they really need to be layperson readable. We need to be working with the community on these so that they need to be something that, uh, parents in the community can understand what is being taught in the different grade levels. We're going to add the NEAS accreditation to the plan. That was a multi-year plan that we were working on to get, uh, to recertify our accreditation, and it wasn't in the plan. It was in mind when the plan was being built. The plan was built such as to make it easier to translate it into what's required for NEAS. But NEAS itself wasn't in the plan. And seeing as that's a critical strategic item, we're adding that into the plan. The intervention program, we talked about that we're funding roughly a million dollars a year in intervention. We had a strategy on the intervention program, but no details in the actions or the milestones in the plan in version three. And we really need to strengthen that up. So we say, what's being implemented? When's it being implemented? What are going to be the measures? The measures can't just be, we have X number of kids in intervention. The measures have to be those in intervention. How are they doing in improvement? How is it working for those kids that are going through intervention? And we need a measure that says, how is it working? Not just how many kids are in intervention, because that doesn't tell you the answer. The answer is, is what we're doing working? And then an assessment that says, based upon those metrics, if it's working, then we reinforce that. If it's not, then we adjust because it has to work. We have to be able to, to improve the output, uh, for the kids. So we said, well, we need to strengthen that piece up. Um, the improved learning objectives, I mentioned that before, that we would start, we would at least extrapolate the New Hampshire averages, which in and of themselves are not great, but that's at least a starting point. Um, we have people presently working on improvement specifically to SAT scores. Jen Mitchison, uh, Steve Kriznaski, Christine DeRocher. Um, but we don't mention that in the strategic plan, and we had him before. That needs to be in there. And then, and then looking at what we can do with PSATs. So you can get PSATs down to the eighth grade, eighth, ninth, 10th, 11th. That gets our kids used to taking the SAT format, helps guide where we are and, and pulses them through. Uh, we had discussions. There, there's a lot of testing that goes on in eighth grade and where do we, where do we balance out? Uh, there's been discussions in the past, and then we wanted to point out, what are the testing requirements? So it's not just SAT. We do NWA. We do a, a couple of others. Uh, and there's been comments in the past that maybe SAT, even though it's required in New Hampshire, isn't the best, but there's other possibilities like the Iowa test or the classic learning test that might be potentials for us to explore, to get a, a, another metric to make sure that we're, uh, we're set with the kids. We talked about, uh, transition plans as you're going from one school to another school. So you're K through two, and then you're going to K, the three through five, and then you're going to the middle school. And particularly the middle school, historically, we've seen grades come down a bit in the middle school, and then we're trying to catch back up. So, so we really need to target that. We need to find ways to make sure that that doesn't happen, and we can keep that uneven keel and keep the, the, um, process going. And then that led to a discussion of, well, we should really do that for each transition. So it's not just middle school, but every transition, we should have a program in place to extend that. Um, we, we mentioned that we want, uh, so we have SAT target improvements. We should develop NWA target improvements. We have a range from NWA that we have to be within. Is that, are we tracking well with the improvement for the students on that range? Um, we just spent a hundred thousand dollars on books, and we talked about, how do we incorporate? How do we get some metrics for really encouraging the kids to use these books that we just bought? To really enhance their reading, to encourage them to read, to reward them for reading, to be able to use these resources that we're putting into place. Uh, we discussed further the Marshall Evaluation Plan. For people that don't know, that's a means by which the administration works with teachers and then kind of a sit down and give solid feedback back and forth as to how the instruction is going, how the, the, the learning process is going, uh, and, and to help guide and direct and, and identify, uh, the best practices so we can improve across all grades. Uh, and then we talked about measurable goals there. It might be X number of teachers receive evaluation of Y percent a year or something along those lines. We also talked about the putting timelines in for all of these. So we have milestones and we know who's working on what, when. Uh, those are all under the strategic, uh, one, two, and three targets, which were grading, curriculum, and improvement. We talked about strategic target two, uh, objective A, retention. Uh, we should be tracking the number of teachers that are leaving. Uh, but we should also be talking to the teachers that are staying and, and saying, what is it about the culture? What is it about Sandborne that you like? You know, there's such a thing as an exit interview. I, I term it a, a staying interview. What, what drives you to stay? What, what are the good things that we're doing? What can we reinforce in that area? Um, and then there should be, uh, an annual report out of the exit interviews. What are the results of the exit interviews? What, what is it looking like? And same with the, for lack of a better word, the staying interviews.
That's what they're calling them.
Yeah. Is that what they are calling them now? I've got that one right. Yeah. Um, and strategic target B, objective B was a mentoring program. Very important to have a mentoring program so you can establish metrics as to what percentage of teachers are in the mentor, uh, are in the program. Uh, how many mentors do you have in the program? Uh, what percentage of incoming teachers had a mentor assigned to them? What is the feedback from those teachers about the, the mentoring program? So those were the real specifics that we said we really need to put into it. We also talked about just overall the plan, and it's a living plan. But if we really focused on those and drove those, a lot of the other things would fall in line. So I, I just gave the information about the, the survey results, um, about, about the grading. And if we can get that clear and we can get the information out to the community, and the parents are, are looking, 87% of them to have this change, we can use this document for further communications with the community. We can use it to help drive some of those community questions, um, engagement questions. You know, the surveys that, that are going out to the teachers, what can we do better? And then we can use that in discussions with the community as to where we're going. So we talked about all those in terms of, well, we don't want to continue to add to this now, but we need to be making this living, and this will grow and these things will be addressed. But the ones that I listed are the ones that would be incorporated in what was sent to you. So I know it doesn't specifically line it up, and if, if you guys want, I can nail this also. Um, but that's, that's at least the things that we discussed, uh, very good discussions. No real, nothing really controversial in any of it. Just, we need it to be measurable. We need to be able to know what our results are. We need to have a plan that, that'll get us the details and the timeline so we can drive that. And then we, we had discussed that. I'd mentioned these things tonight so I could at least clarify some of that for everyone. That's all I have.
So the next meeting is May 18th, correct?
Uh, we have a, um, I want to clarify. I made a mistake. Um, Dr. Haynes will be away for May 18th. That's why I had that date stuck in my head. Um, she, she will be able to be at the June 1st meeting. So we're not, we didn't want to have people feel like she made all these changes today, and then we ask you to approve it tonight. That felt really rushed and not enough process. Um, we have a meeting with Fremont, uh, in early May on a Tuesday, May 10th. So that meeting typically is a joint meeting, and we were probably going to non-public to discuss items with Fremont. Um, so that won't necessarily be our typical business meeting. The 18th would be a typical business meeting. And then, um, so we would look now to approve this on June 1st, which is still within the board's goal of approving a, a strategic plan by the close of this school year.
I just wanted to add, when we talked about that, I, I don't think it'd be appropriate to be voting on, uh, the plan without Dr. Haynes. She's put in
Yeah.
tremendous amount of work on this, and she should be here, uh, for what will hopefully be the final culmination and approval of the plan.
So I would ask that if you could read through it, let me know if there's anything that you need clarified. We would prefer not to do another revision. We've done about seven, and it's a lot of hours. We think that we're ready to land the plane, but if there's something missing that you're concerned about, please feel free to email me and all, or Dr. Haynes and I, and we'll try to get you whatever you need to, to get this settled at the June 1st meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
All of you. Everyone's worked hard on the community, everybody. And we will post this final version on the website so that the folks who are here in the audience or at home can read it as well. Did you have your hand up?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, you're on my right, so I keep looking over there. We're going to fix that for next week. We, we have to put Maura back over on the
I like to complain about it.
No, I was, I did think about this. We used to have the student council representative over there where Rick is sitting.
Uh huh.
We had two board members, three board members. We had
Two board members.
board members over there. So it was easier to make sure you kind of
Checked in with everyone.
checked in with everybody.
Yeah, Maura's in an
I will make sure I'm not forgotten.
I don't worry about you, but you know.
You're asking me to move my seat?
I'm, I might.
Gladly will. That is my better side.
It all works out.
Not that I have a good side, but
Oh, man. Um, okay. So we are now on to a review of district needs. We already did 8.2.3. So we're going to do 8.2.1, which is running track.
All right. Um,
Giving it to the boss.
Perfect.
Sorry? I'm giving it to you.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good.
All right. So, um, so what we're asking for is, um, is approval to, um, re-line the, the running track. And let me give you a little background. So the high school, middle school running track requires periodic maintenance and preferably is recoding the, um, running track every seven to 10 years. The last time this maintenance occurred was in 2012. And, um, in, in your board documents tonight is a discussion from, um, our vendor that will be doing this. And they do recommend, um, seven to 10 years for it, for it. Then they also have, um, three to five years for putting in like a respray over it, which, um, kind of enhances the, uh, the surface and then repainting it every other year. So, um, whoops.
Matt, I forgot to ask earlier, because we talked about this in facilities. Have we, since it was done, have we kept up with the maintenance and done the respreads on it?
No. Nothing's been done to the track since 2012.
Which is why it was added to the big three. It's way overdue.
So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for asking.
So another future, let me give you some, um, future costs so that, um, for this summer to put to re-line it would cost, um, almost a hundred and $30,000. Um, in three to five years, we'd have to spend another $35,000 to, to put that, that little squeaky surface on it. And then we'd have to do a full track replacement, um, after 30 years, which would be, uh, 2031. In today's construction price, it's $600,000 to do it. Okay? I'm asking for $128,950, and we're going to be trying to do this, um, through current appropriations. I've done three cost analysis on this particular track. Um, I've tried to do it with, um, doing the maintenance this summer. I've tried to do it with rolling the dice and delaying the maintenance and, um, accelerating the track replacement in a couple of years. The problem that I, I came across is, um, I couldn't reduce the risk of the track making it a couple of years. Um, the, for example, when, when we tried to, um, uh, when one of the baking boilers failed, I told the school board that I was willing to roll the dice, um, on, on the remaining boiler for the, for the whole year. It didn't last a month. But the reason why that I was willing to, um, to roll the dice on that one is because I also had a vendor who could bring in, uh, a supplemental boiler. In this particular case, if this track fails, we have no other option. We, um, those programs would have to stop. Okay? So I can't abate that risk. So rolling the dice, throwing it down, kicking the can down the road. Um, I, I just can't say to the school board with a straight face that I can make it happen. So I've included my three, um, year, I mean, my three proposals there. Now, one of the other things that I would recommend beyond this is that we keep setting aside at least $50,000 a year into the, um, the capital improvement and maintenance capital reserve fund. So when it does happen in, um, another 10 years, that there's sufficient funds in there to cover a majority of the cost of the track replacement. All right.
Rick?
So, um, I won't say the name of the company, but, uh, I am for obviously rescursing the track because my understanding is it's also insurance liability because of talent.
Everyone uses the track. Yeah.
Correct.
Yep.
The major problem I have with this quote is that there's no warranty. And a hundred and $28,000 is a lot of money for not even a day.
Yeah.
So I'm, you know, like I'm all for the track, but I'm not all for this. Okay. I think we, we get more quotes.
Okay.
All right. And even if we have to put more money into the project to get that warranty, I, I think we need to ask what that, what that amount is because, you know. So I think I had a conversation with Jim. Jim said it best. It's like somebody putting a roof on your house and saying, don't call me if it leaks.
But they might be willing to offer a warranty if they asked, right?
We can ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it, I'm sorry. Does it clearly spell that there is no warranty or we just don't know?
It says there's
Says it asterisk, there is no warranty.
Okay, okay.
I, I just want to echo both of those points. Those are the points that I was going to make. One, there's no warranty, and this is a hundred and $30,000 with one quote. And we need to, we need more than one quote and a hundred, and I, and I think over $2,500. But we need another quote and, and you can't have somebody come in and do a hundred and $30,000 worth of work, walk out and say, yeah, it's all yours now, whether it works or not.
So I'll just simply share that, um, having done this before in another district, that made the mistake of waiting to do it, that it ended up costing a lot more money, which is why we brought this to you early so that we could have a conversation, hear your concerns, go back. But you may not get, this may be one of those instances where there aren't enough companies to get more than one bid. We could not find anyone to redo the track in the, in a district I previously worked in. We, we got lucky and found someone. This isn't, this is a specialty job. It's not, it's not like roofing where you can get a bunch of different roofers to give you a quote. This is a very specific service. So I just, I don't think that it's a matter of whether or not Matt has tried to get multiple quotes. He, it's not just finding someone who can do it. It's finding someone who can do it in the year that you need it done and, and get it right. I think that I, I would recommend that the board authorize Matt to get a warranty quote up to a certain amount. And then if it's above that, come back to the board or figure out a way that we can. I'm worried about getting it scheduled for the summer. That's all I'm worried about is, is the scheduling, not the process.
I'd be worried about publicly making a statement that I'm going to pay X number of dollars for a warranty.
Oh, thanks, Jamie. You're right.
Asking somebody to
Yeah, yeah. No, you're right. That was a bad idea. Right. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. We've discussed those things before, but, but I'm just saying, could we have it go to facilities and have them approve it? Could we, could we have a process to move forward without having to come back if, if we need to move? If, if we need to move, what was the timeline, Matt, for this summer? That's the part I'm worried about.
Uh, I'd have to look back at the quote, but my understanding it was going to occur shortly after, um, school ends, but, um, they're also booking up too right now.
How'd you find those people?
These are the people who actually constructed the track.
Okay.
And they're the reason why that the track has lasted so long.
Do you have other people at other schools that have tracks that you can call and ask for days?
Oh, we can certainly do that. I know that, um, there are some people out there. I would just say that this track lasted this long.
Yeah. So you have confidence in this?
Yeah, yes, I do.
So should I.
Yeah.
Amen.
So is there a reason we have, so and I don't know what this, I don't know what the deadline was, but I feel like when we were going through the budget process, um, I believe that both the budget committee and the school board, I could be wrong, maybe it was more school board. We had many conversations about wanting to prepare the quotes ahead of, we were saying, hey, let's get these quotes ahead of time so that when the time comes and, you know, we, we have to make a decision. We have the quotes in front of us. Is there a reason we only, or maybe we're not at that deadline? I don't know. Is there a reason we only have one quote presented? Is nobody else doing it? Or why, I kind of feel like we forecasted this happening. Why do we only have one quote?
We, um, the vendor has been doing a great job in making sure that that track lasts this long.
So I would go back to them and tell them that you discussed it with the board and we want a warranty.
Okay.
And see what they're willing to give us.
I'd like to point out that there is a little spot there on the contract in the fine print under the signature that says this proposal may be withdrawn by us if it not accepted within so many days. And they did not fill out how many days, so they kind of are.
They kind of left it open.
Kind of left it open, so I'm just pointing that out.
So what are we going to do if our next meeting is not until May 18th? Where is that kind of put us if we don't approve it tonight?
Matt may have to schedule a special meeting if they need to get this in and get it scheduled.
Okay.
Briefly for just a short one item agenda next week to, to approve this if he needs to do that.
Or even if you make it, um, uh, go before the facilities committee and we can have like a little meeting of the facilities committee just on this topic.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jamie. I wasn't, we obviously should not discuss the amount of money here in public. We could go into non-public if we needed to because it is a negotiation, but we don't need to. We just, we just need to figure out a mechanism to, to deal with the concern that I have about the timeliness so that it's scheduled and we get it in the summer. That's all I'm asking for. Whatever that mechanism is, you could, you could, um, we could go in and on public and talk about the, the, the contract and what we're willing to, it's a negotiation, so it falls, it's appropriate. We could go, um, you could say, we'll, we'll give this to the facilities committee and let the facilities committee decide. We could also, um, have, uh, a, once Matt speaks to them tomorrow, a discussion about a brief emergency meeting next week, just for that one agenda item. It's fine, we can, I, what would you all like to do?
I don't want to miss the boat on it.
Yeah, I, I don't think any of us want to miss the boat, but I think we all want to make sure that we're spending our money wisely.
I would appreciate if Matt went back to get a warranty, if we have to have a special meeting or go through facilities. I'm comfortable with that. I also am curious that we have to provide our own dumpster and get rid of all the stuff. Is that common with these types of jobs?
It's seriously, it's not going to be a problem. We have dumpsters. We have, I think, six dumpsters throughout the district, um, with enough capacity to haul that away.
Okay.
When do you think you would know whether they would be willing to offer a warranty?
I will make sure they give me an answer tomorrow.
Okay. Because if, if they aren't, then I think we should ask other companies for.
Yeah, we, I, I think Rick's point about the warranty is critical, right? We have to have a warranty of some sort.
I mean, I'd almost like other companies to give us a quote if it's possible, just to, you know, have a comparison. But if, if you can't find anybody or these, I mean, there's got to be other companies working for other schools that are doing a good job.
There are not that many companies out there that do this. And, and really they're coming in from Maine to do it. You're really looking outside of New England.
Okay.
Just, I understand we might be looking outside, but to Maura's point asked, the answer was, well, these guys are really good. So we really need to at least check. And two is for, I was going to ask that question too. The dumpster, what exactly are they tearing up? I thought this was a coating project. What, what is being torn up that has to be hauled away?
My guess is, is they're probably, um, shaving a portion off the top so that there's something to adhere to as opposed to reusing the, um, existing surface.
It's not, I don't think it's even right now, so they probably have to level it out. Would be my guess.
These are going to air clean the entire surface and we'll make any repairs.
I would just make sure whatever we're disposing of, we can dispose of.
Yes.
Check our contract with the.
Yes, and, and just so everyone knows, our, our disposal company watches what goes in the dumpsters.
We should ask that.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to.
And it should be in the contract.
Yeah.
I, I'm smiling because we had a, a major event my first month here in the art room. So it's very wise to keep an eye on what we can dispose of.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we do hire, um, clean harbors to test stuff, um, all the time to make sure that we can dispose of it properly.
All right. So at this point, I guess if someone would make a motion, I guess to either, do we, I mean, do we need an official mo, I guess we only need a motion.
Given us direction to, to go back and get more information.
But do we need a motion if we want this to go to, if someone, if the board would rather have it go to facilities or for approval? We'd have to have a motion by the board.
Yes.
That's what we're doing.
Yes, you would.
Want to have a special meeting and all come back together? That's fine, we can do it that way. So I guess it's, we need to figure out, come together.
I would just say that, and I wasn't on the vote to move the students here to the middle school. But I did say as a budget committee member, that since we did, we needed to support those kids. Hmm. That they're here. So I think it shouldn't, it should sit with us.
Yeah.
It should be facilities.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you for the.
So you just have a quick special meeting with Matt next week. Hopefully next week, if we can get the information. We'll know more, we'll send you an email tomorrow, we'll know tomorrow, at least whether or not he can get a warranty. We can't get a warranty and we have to go to another company that could, I, it's better to do it right than to do it halfway. So I prefer to do things right in once.
All right, on to auditorium upgrades.
Oops, I just closed it out. All right. So I've also put in a document in here that, um, for the auditorium update, um, right now we're trying to get, um, quotes for each of the, um, specific items. And we've linked, um, uh, what those items are. And for example, um, I gave an example for some of the things that we're trying to get quotes for, which is, um, converting the lights in the theater. These are the main house lights. We have 54 of them and converting them to LEDs. We were also talking about not converting all 54 of them, but half of those. Because the LEDs, um, throw out brighter lights than traditional lights. And so.
They also last longer, right?
Yes, they last longer. So I'm just right now trying to give you an update of where we are. Just difficulties trying to pull together quotes.
I just have some, uh, concerns with some of the LED comments that are in here and some beware of gutters. So, um, LED lights aren't necessarily brighter than traditional lights. It depends on how they're designed. The LED whites, lights are lower wattage, but they have huge heat sinks. If you're not careful about what you're putting in your fixtures, you can violate your fixture, specs as to the heat and you could cause a fire in the ceiling.
Okay.
So we need to be careful. I also need to be careful because of the huge heat sinks and LED lights. They don't often fit in traditional fixtures. So if we go out and just spec LED lights without first validating that the form and fit of that light will fit into the fixture, you could end up with lamps that can't go into the fixture.
Yeah.
Some other points to make is I talked to some of the guys that I work with that deal with, um, studio and stage and, and what are people using for studio and stage? Downlights, LED makes a lot of sense, but when you're looking at front lights, you don't want to use LED. Causes a lot of glaring issues and, and people have eye issues on the stage. Also does not do well for color rendition and, um, well, for, for skin color rendition, people are still using halogen and metal halide lamps. So I think you really need to get a catalog of what's in the ceiling, the fixtures, and then start making sure we know where we are. I mean, it just, I, it's very easy to, to go LED because it's operational costs are far better. But initial costs are, could be four to five times. So you really need to run the, the numbers as to what is your best cost of ownership for a lamp.
Can I, can I just, I, I know that this is your area of expertise because it's what you did for work for a number of years. If you would like to liaise with us and help.
Yeah, and the LEDs.
We would appreciate the, the consultation. I, I know that you literally, this is your.
I can bring in a guy that runs it and, and I just had to bring him the saddle up after, but I can bring in a guy. Have him go up and, and.
If we could have someone help us out, that'd be great. This truly is not as, the track is, we've got people who have to be, it's a, a weather, it's a weather related activity. There's got to be, you know, a number of days, it's got to be dry, the right temperature. This can get, this is a, a, this is, we're working on this. It's a, we had been asked by members of the board and Budcom to update the board in a timely manner about the progress toward these quotes. And that's what we're, you know, so we have time with this one. This one isn't as sensitive.
And just to answer, um, one of your concerns about having a, um, an inventory of all the, uh, the lamps. We just had a company go through and do an audit of, of all of our buildings. So we're going to be able to, actually, I'm going to ask that person to come and speak before, um, the school board about all the lights in all the buildings and possible solutions with, um, with lighting.
I'll reserve the next comment for non-public.
That's fine, that's fine. But, but also we, we recognize that you have a background in this.
Yeah, there's, there's some things to be concerned with what Matt said from a safety.
Let's, let's stay, let's stay with the auditorium. I think the key with the auditorium is we, we have a number of items that need to be addressed. It's not one item. So it's, we are in the process of, of collecting, um, quotes for those items and looking at the different issues. And I think, Matt, at this point, this was more of just an FYI for the board that we're working on it.
Yes.
And I appreciate that because then I could, I could reach out and get some, some feedback.
Yes, totally would help.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're officially down to the big two.
We are officially down, I'd say one and a half, Rick. I think we're cruising in on the track, but the auditorium's a tricky one.
It is.
Yeah. It's big.
It's tricky, but it's so integral to our.
It is critical. Critical.
Someone fall?
People forget that the younger students use it in the summer for things and they have performances there. It's a community hub.
But it is a great point about the, like the glaring, like as someone with a, like with eye stuff, like the LED lights or like the lights on people's cars now.
Yeah, yeah.
Seriously like blind you.
Yeah. So we'll bring this back on the 18th of May with more information and some consultation with Jamie on lighting. And I, I asked Gordon to work with, uh, Mr. Stack and Mr. Angel to have a fully fleshed out proposal for May 18th. Then what we'll do is we'll forward it to the board in advance, so there's no sticker shock at the meeting. There might be sticker shock when you get it, but at least it.
Yeah, just to be clear, Matt, when, when you do the inventory, I, I need to know what kind of fixtures there are.
Yeah.
And I can, then I can have them spec out for me what can go in.
Yeah. Yeah, and they're the big cans, so they, they definitely have some flexibility. But I know, being in the music industry, I understand what you're talking about with the, the types of bulbs that will work. I totally agree.
I, anything that we're going to do is going to be fully, um, hashed out by the school board. I want to make sure that I don't want to leave anything on the table when it comes, especially when it comes to lights.
Well, it, just the auditorium in general, we want, again, if we're going to do these, they need to be done right. And for a long, the longest lasting effect possible for our dollars. We don't want to come back to the table and do this again.
Correct.
We, we want to do this right.
We will move to second public comment now.
Hi, I'm Sam Fahey from Newton. I just have a couple of general comments on the strategic plan. I fully understand the whole living document thing. I'm a nurse, that's what we do too. We make a care plan, we see how the patient's doing, we reevaluate as we go. But we do that with everybody involved. So I'm just a little bit nervous where we're keep saying it's a living document, that we're going to use that as a way to make a big deviation from this plan that everybody worked so hard on, without full community input as well. So I'm just nervous that we're going to hit one of those obstacles that we talked about at the last meeting, go, we're going to pivot to do this and not put in a full, you know, look what the parents and the students and everybody want. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure that that is the plan. Um, and the second thing is, so I have four kids, they're spaced out two years each. My oldest will be going to the middle school, he's going to sixth grade. So my understanding is that part of the reason that that all happened is so that we have room for the preschoolers, if we have more preschoolers. But I find it interesting that, um, several times, um, we've referred to the school as a K through whatever. Um, and if I was one of our wonderful preschool teachers, I would be feeling underappreciated because it's happened several times. So that's it, thank you.
There's no one else. Sanborn Regional Budget Committee will meet on Thursday, April 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the library at Sanborn Regional High School. Uh, the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting held with Fremont on Wednesday, May 10th at 6:00 PM at the Fremont Town Hall, 295 Main Street, Fremont, New Hampshire, 03044. Uh, Wednesday, May 18th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Sanborn Regional School Board will meet in the library at Sanborn Regional High School. And if someone wants to bring us into non-public, we are going to take a quick break.
John, that, that should say Tuesday, May 10th.
Oh, you're right, it should say Tuesday, May 10th. Nope, that's all right. And I should have caught that because I knew it was a Tuesday. That's all right. So Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, at the 6:00 PM Fremont.
I didn't catch that either.
Town Hall. I know. And we've been talking about it all night. All right, so if someone wants to bring us into non-public.
A move that we go into non-public session per RSA 91 dash A colon three, um, Roman numeral two.
All right. Second, roll call vote, Rick. Heather, Jim.
Yes.
Emmy.
Yes.
Jimmy. Yes.
Myself, yes.
Yes.